Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the June 1 informational meeting. I'd like to note that Councilmembers Sale and Kylie are absent today, and Councilmember Ericsson is joining us on the phone. Welcome. We'll get started here with a report from Councilmember Brecky on the ESF bid board meeting that she was at.
Actually, I was not at that meeting, but I see that I have the report here. I'll just have a copy made of it and put it in your folders, because I went ahead and attended the meeting out at the airport. They had a luncheon out there and kind of had their annual meeting out there, so I was at that instead. But it looks like, I just kind of browsed through it, and it looks like kind of the same as we've been seeing. They're moving in the right direction, but it's still slow in the tourist and business industry.
Well, thank you for that report, Councilmember Brecky. Are there any council remarks today? Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Attended the Memorial Day program and ribbon cutting at the Veteran Cemetery yesterday. The mayor was there. Jim David was out there. Counselor Kylie was there, and former Counselor Rolfing. And, boy, is it beautiful. If you haven't seen it yet, it is worth a trip to go out and take a look at it. It's certainly worthy of those who have served. So I really enjoyed it. It's nice to see it come to fruition, and congrats to everybody who took part in that at all levels of government. So, anyway, enjoyed the day. I had a good crowd and worked the system to get a lot of people out there. And I just thought I'd share that with folks. If you haven't seen it, get out there and take a look. Thank you.
Thank you for those remarks. Counselor Neitzler.
Thank you. The South Dakota Legislature convened a marijuana summer study group. The first meeting was last Wednesday. They met for a total of 12 hours over two days. I listened to all of that in its entirety, and there's a lot of information. It was really informative. There is a website for it. I can send a link that has documents and audio, which is very good. I think maybe in the next few weeks I might talk about some key takeaways. There is a lot of information presented. It includes a couple dozen legislators, and the purpose, among other things, is to study medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, and the implementation of one or both. After those two days of meetings, they're splitting into two groups, subcommittees. One is focused on medical and one is recreational. And they're going to start meeting in the next few weeks, and they're working up their agendas for both of those. They're looking at potential possible legislative changes and fixes that may happen during a special session near the end of the year, but it was stressed that those would be only really technical and very minor, non-controversial changes at this point. Anything substantive would wait until the next session. They're looking at implementation issues and just getting educated. Some of their goals stated by the chair was to analyze IM-26, analyze current state law and the overlap with IM-26 and Amendment A, and where there's conflicts that would need to be fixed, become educated on the aspects of legalized marijuana, both good and bad, and to develop recommendations for potential legislation that fixes or any conflicts and improves it in the operational issues. One thing the chair noted that I think is good for all of us to keep remembering is that this is a new industry in South Dakota, and anyone going into business needs to realize that there's going to be several changes over the next several years, and as we understand how it works and we implement it, and so this won't be static, so you need to be very cognizant of that and watching your local governments and your state government to see their implementation and potential changes. One of the big takeaways was how complicated the subject is. When you find out just how many facets there are to it, you kind of get an appreciation of why it takes a while to stand this up, and although it's been done in other states, every state has their own state laws, and you have to comply with those. There's a lot of positives, but there's also negatives. There's a lot of unintended consequences, and there's, you know, things such as making sure it doesn't get into the hands of kids and illicit use and all of those other concerns. There was a lot of varied presentations that I look forward to talking about in the future. Something that I think was really kind of interesting that was explained is, and it colors everything that has to do with this particular subject, is that marijuana is still an illegal substance at the federal level, and that's why you have all of this framework and all of these individual things. And based on the history, in 1970, the Controlled Substances Act was passed by Congress, and that created five schedules of drugs. And that went from Schedule 1, which is essentially the highest possibility for abuse and addiction, all the way down to Schedule 5, which is the lowest. Schedule 1 is the one that, schedule of drugs, that is recognized as, at least at the federal level, as not having any legitimate medical benefit or recognized medical benefit. Whether that's true or not is obviously, you know, that may have changed in the real world, but that's what is recognized in the law. And things in that schedule are heroin, LSD, ecstasy, cocaine, marijuana, and some others. Schedule 2 through 5 includes legal drugs that can be prescribed, like Schedule 2 is high, high potential for abuse, but it can be prescribed, like fentanyl, and then all the way down to cold medicines at Level 5, which, Schedule 5, which are, that don't have pseudoephedrine and low levels of codeine and very low possibility for abuse. Because it's still illegal under federal law, that creates a lot of challenges in the implementation of medical marijuana and why you see a lot of the things that you see. So, for example, marijuana cannot be prescribed, so a doctor will not prescribe it. They will write a letter of certification saying that you have a condition that would benefit from it, but by law, they can't prescribe it. And since they can't prescribe it, that also means that pharmacies and pharmacists who are governed by federal law cannot dispense it. So you can't go to a pharmacy and buy it. At least as of right now. I mean, the law may change at the federal level, but you can't go get marijuana at a pharmacy. And doctors can't dose it. It doesn't go under, it doesn't have FDA approval. It doesn't go through all of those testings and all of those things. So that's why you have dispensaries, and that's why you go buy it there, because you can't go to the pharmacy. So that's an entirely different supply chain, and that's why you have all of these things that have to be created. One of the questions that comes up is, so if it's illegal by federal law, how in the world has it become legal in all of these states? And the reason, really, for the most part, goes back to what's called the Cole Memorandum, which was issued in 2013 by the U.S. Deputy Attorney General, James Cole, under the Obama administration. And in short, it put in writing that the policy of the federal government, as it relates to law enforcement with their limited resources, that they would not enforce federal marijuana prohibitions in states that did two things. Number one, legalized it in some form, and number two, implemented strong and effective regulatory enforcement systems to control the cultivation, distribution, sale, and possession of marijuana. And so that latter reason is why you have very elaborate rules, and then they have to go through, we have to create all of these constructs, not to mention the, obviously, the downsides of it, but... So that's why it doesn't get prosecuted, but that was actually rescinded in 2018 under the Trump administration, but it's still been what state, local governments are using, essentially kind of following those guidelines. The Biden administration has signaled they will likely reinstate that memo. And of course, there's legislation always at the federal level, including now, to, you know, there's always debate about potentially legalizing marijuana in some form at the federal level, and that always could change. But until then, that does create a lot of challenges as it relates to things such as doctors, pharmacists, bankers, just to name a few, who have codes of professional conduct or federal rules or regulations they have to follow with marijuana being illegal at the federal level. So that does create a number of interesting challenges in the implementation and the operation and for people's access to it. And so those are the things that we just kind of have to be aware of, and we're all kind of have to work under that framework. And the other thing they noted is that the Supreme Court decision could be coming at any time. We don't know. They're usually released on Thursday mornings at 8:00 a.m. So every Thursday morning, stay tuned, and we'll see what happens with Amendment A. So, sorry for the lengthy report, but I thought it would be beneficial. Thanks.
Great remarks. I'd like a copy of them. Okay, so any other council remarks? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our only presentation of the day, MEP fee revision by Butch Warrington. Butch.
Good afternoon, counsel. Butch Warrington, Chief Building Official. Today, I'm going to go through MEP revisions that we've been working on for quite some time. And MEP is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing revisions. Right now, the way it's done is the inspectors count. They count, electrical inspector will account circuit breakers, plumbing inspector will count fixtures, mechanical inspector will count duct systems, furnaces, air conditioners, and I think we come up with a little better way of doing things. Some of the benefits that are going to happen are, between Finance and myself, we figured we're going to save about one and a half FTEs the whole time. Between inspection invoicing is about a .4 FTE, invoice processing, about a .2, and payment entry, mail collections, about a .6, and over in my department, about a .3 for one of our permit texts to go through each and every bill. So it's going to be a cost savings. It's all about efficiencies. And one of the nice things is the contractors will know up their fee upfront. Right now, they get billed on every trip charge, and then they get billed for every piece of equipment. Well, the piece of equipment they can figure out, the trip charge is the unknown, because how many times are they going to have to go out? Well, in an apartment building, depends on how many times they do call us. It could be several. Or, you know, a house, it may be one or five. So it's really about efficiency. One of the things we're going to be able to do this, and I like to brag about this, this is our CSS, and we're going to talk about this more, but it's, we launched it in March of 2017. And by doing this, we'll be able to plug that dollar value in and make them, or the contractor will be able to pay it right upfront. So there's no handling. They can use our CSS system. So there's no physical handling of money, which means there won't be any many errors or anything like that. So it's, and increased security and safety is another thing. And here's a graph. I like to show this because back in 2017 in March, how we showed things, how we started out. Well, that first year, about 1,700 transactions. Last year, in 2020, there was almost 11,000 transactions. And this is one of the things that really kept us going in 2020, because I have the stats that show about March of last year, things skyrocketed, because we closed city center down. They were able to keep working and keep going, and it really did make a difference on everything. The last time we had a significant raise on MEP was for the plumbing, 1998. Mechanical, 2001. Electrical was 2011. It was really time to go through everything anyway. Well, if we can do a more efficient way of doing things rather than just sticking with the status quo, let's do it. So we've been working on this, and I think one of the big advantages of this will be the general contractor is going to be able to pay for his fees right upfront. You know, so it doesn't have to wait till the end of the project to know what that fee cost is going to be, so he can plug it in and be more accurate on his bidding. Just to kind of give you an idea, we wanted this to kind of match what we do for the building permit fee. The building permit fees, we used a graduated scale, and that started back in 1944. That was the first time we had a graduated scale for the building side. In 1985 was the last time it was adjusted, so it's been the same ever since. In 1992, we added another scale, and that was the commercial scale. So things haven't changed since then, and one of the nice parts about it is as the projects get more expensive, our fees increase, too. So we don't have to keep coming back to council and asking for an increase. It just automatically does it. This is kind of a neat little slide here, and it shows what's current and what we want to do with the revised. In the current, you're going to have the permit is requested, okay? Then you have the inspection requested, inspection completed. Then we have to invoice the fee. Then a monthly bill is sent out to the contractor, and then we get the payment received. If we revise this, the permit is going to be requested, and the fees are paid right upfront. The inspection's requested, the inspection's completed. It makes it very simple. Back in May of 2020, I got an email from the USD Beacon Business Consulting Group. They were looking for ideas for their graduate programs. So I put in a request to do this. They accepted. I told them I wanted to convert from fixture-based to valuation-based. They took that project on. They did a wonderful job. I can't say how good they did. They compared it to three other cities that have the similar type of fee structure we'd like to go to, and that was Bismarck, Cedar Rapids, and Minnetonka. We found out right away, Minnetonka was way too high on their fees. We didn't like that one. But Bismarck and Cedar Rapids were more in our line with what we're going to do. And this is the fee schedule that they came up with. It's a great fee schedule, but it really wasn't what I liked. So I met with Finance, and Amber Gibson was invaluable to me over in Finance on getting this going. They used a percentage scale, and that's not the way the building is set up. It's a graduated per $1,000, and we really wanted to keep it the same. So it's easier to understand, I think. So we came up with this. And our current model is 5,000, 0 to 5,000, $19. It's really rough. USD model was $50. What we're proposing is a $40. And the reason we went to a $40 minimum fee is because that's about what our costs are. By the time we figure an employee, a truck, equipment, miscellaneous, it's about a half-hour inspection is about $40. So that's why we came up with that minimum of $40. And as I go through later on why we came up with some of these other dollar values, I'll explain that a little bit. But using the cost of the project to the valuation is really, I think, the way to go. Now, how we came up with that valuation was if a project is, we'll just say, $7 million, about $700,000 of that 7 million, or about 10%, is going to be mechanical. Another 10% is electrical. Another 10% is plumbing. We got that figure after consulting with general contractors, with architects, and how they figure things when they get in that rough stage and whatnot. It really come out pretty nice, and we wanted to keep this as simple as possible. So this is what we came up with for a recommendation. We have them, up to $5,000 will be a minimum $40 fee. And then it's a graduated scale up from there. So $5,001 up to $25,000 is going to be $6 per thousand. So the maximum at $25,000 would be $160, and we just kind of worked that up. We spent a lot of time playing with these numbers, working with them. But again, that minimum fee was about our, excuse me, our department cost, and that's really what we wanted to keep. Here's where I give an example. And this is on a commercial project. It's a $7 million project. So the mechanical would be about $700,000, electrical, plumbing. So their total bill is going to be $2,855. And this was kind of neat. When we showed this, because I met with several groups, one of the plumbing contractors that we met with on the Plumbing Board of Appeals said, "That's uncanny how close it is to what I actually would pay." He was very surprised. And our intent really wasn't to raise the cost as much as it was to find something that's simple and get it going. This is an example. In 2020, there were 742 homes constructed. The average cost was $235,000. So the MEP valuation would be $23,500 for each of the trades, so they would have a total bill of $151 each. Here's another one. This was $179,000. This is where we figured a 13, from a 0 to a 1,300 square foot home in 2020, the average cost was about $179,000. So your MEP valuation was $17,900, so each of the fees would be about $118. And that's where we really were concentrating on was the lower end. We didn't want to raise it for the affordable housing. And here's where, what it was and where it would be. And I use 2018 because that's the data that I gave USD. And that's where I had all the data for how much it costs, because we had to do a lot of research to figure out how much each one costs. So the average on that 1,160 square foot main level, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, was $306.50 on average. We're now going to raise that, but very minimal, up to $324. We really wanted to keep that really close to the same for that affordable housing. This is what we really concentrated on. What else is in the ordinance? Well, we're going to raise some other fees, too. The homeowners' permit were scattered between 20 and 25, so we want to make them all $25. The after-hours fee, $70. Okay, we add $40. That's $80 an hour. So time and a half, double time on weekends, so 140, 120, 160. So we proposed a fee of $200. Rarely do we go out after hours. I would guess maybe a couple, three times a year. A lot of times when we do, it's for a restaurant or something that wants to keep open. So we do early morning or late night inspections, so they can keep going busy. They do the remodel at night. We go in and do the inspections. That way, they can keep going. Reinspection fee, we want to go from 70 to $200. Now, this is rarely charged also, because if you have a correction, we're going to go out there anyway. Where this comes into play is if they call us, they didn't make the corrections and wasted our time going out there. Then we want to hit them up for a little bit for a fine, so that's where we raised it from 70 to $200 there. But there again, rarely does this happen. I don't have any data on how often, but very rarely. Additional plan review, we go from 70 to 100. This is going to be only if they change their plans, and we have to do a review again. Doesn't happen very often, that we can't work things out. Once in a while, we do have to do it, but very, very rarely again. Bond claims, want to go from 150 to $250 administrative fee. There again, I don't have to do but three or four of them a year, but if it's a bond claim, there's a reason it's bad, and I think we should be able to recoup a little bit of our money off that bond. The people we've met with, we met with the Home Builders Association, and we met with the Buildings Code Committee. And at that point in time, they took it to the Board of Directors for the HBA, and they both have given our blessing. I met with the Mechanical Board of Appeals, Electrical Board of Appeals, and Plumbing Board of Appeals. And then we put another one in there. We contacted some commercial contractors and developers and had them come in and met with them. And they were Lloyd Construction, Gilhaugen, Signature Companies, Empire Building Services, and Jared Smart Construction. And they all gave recommendation of approval to the city council. The one thing they really liked was how simple it was. They liked the simplicity of it. What's next? Well, after today, I'd like to take this, probably the first reading in a week, couple of weeks, and in July, have a second reading. And with that, I will take any questions.
Are there any questions? Counselor Neitzler?
Butch, so today, so if I, so I schedule an inspection, and then I would be invoiced for that, and then if you do... How many different invoices might there be for a typical project, I guess is what I'm asking today versus?
Right now, as a homeowner or as a contractor?
Let's say contractor.
Okay. Right now, the contractor will just take a single house. Okay, so we'll take the mechanical. They're going to come in, they're going to have to do a mechanical rough-in inspection, mechanical final inspection, and if there was any corrections in between, there's going to be three bills for that, one for each one of those. This time, now, there's going to be one bill. It's going to be upfront cost. It's going to be based on the cost of that house. At that point in time, he pays before he gets any inspection. He's going to have to pay that fee, and then we're going to go out and do all the inspections.
So your fees are reflecting what you know typically, how many times you would have to go out there, as an example?
Yes. Typically, on a single-family dwelling, there's three inspections on each one, and that's kind of what we base it on.
You touched on this a little bit, but just for, I guess, clarity. You mentioned corrections, and you also mentioned reinspections. So for example, you go out to do a rough-in inspection, and you say, you know, "You got to fix this outlet. This isn't right. This isn't right. This isn't right." What do you, are those what you, anyway, so what happens? What's a correction versus?
If there's a typical correction, we're going to go out there, no, no problem, no extra fees or anything. Right now, they would get billed an extra $19 because it's an extra trip charge. However, where the reinspection fee comes in is when they call us out and tell us all the corrections are made, and they didn't do them. That's when we're going to charge them a little extra.
So under this one, if you come out and you do the first inspection, you notice a few deficiencies, say you need to make corrections. They do it. They call you a day later. You come out there. They've made the corrections. That's not an extra charge.
That is correct. That is correct.
And then, in general, is your principle, you're trying to more, besides simplify, obviously, which people like, are you trying to just more accurately try to capture the actual cost to the city in terms of staff and more right-size that?
I think, it was thought about, yes. We're trying to just get our staff money back, is what we did on a minimum charge, and that's the way we looked at that.
Okay. And then as far, finally, as far as feedback, so when you ran through some examples with the stakeholders, did they generally find that the numbers didn't change that substantially, and that's why they're reasonably comfortable, or?
They didn't change that much, but they liked the simplicity of it. That was something nice, nice. And you asked them, they can pay for this upfront now. So it doesn't necessarily have to go through their electrical plumbing contractor, and maybe they get a charge extra. I don't know how they do their building, but they like the simplicity. They can pay for it right upfront.
Okay, and maybe if, one follow-up, because you mentioned that. So like, if I'm a general and I'm building a house, could, I mean, they could pay all of those upfront and then deal with, working out with subs what they pay, and that's not your?
Yes, they can. One of the interesting things, and we had something real similar, this was on a commercial project. The MEP contractor was behind on his bill, so we shut down, had no inspections until he paid it up. So we shut down, had no inspections, until he paid it up. The general contractor called me and asked, "Can I just pay his portion of it?" And I said, "No." At that point in time, when we put him on that notice, we make him pay everything up to current. But they aren't all my projects. And I said, "Well, he should have thought of that." Within a couple of days, he was able to get inspections, but we'd get away from that. And a lot of times, and one of the other things is, a lot of times what I have to do is for bond access is because they don't pay their fees. This way it's going to be upfront before anything happens.
Sure. You're collecting before you do the work versus doing it in arrears?
Right.
In collections?
Exactly.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Any questions on the phone? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Butch. Great presentation. Now we'll move on to the public comment. I invite anyone from the public to speak on the item discussed here today. Please come forward, state your name, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak on that item that was discussed here today. Seeing none, as there is no other business, this meeting is adjourned.